Good evening, everyone.
You've got a gavel.
Oh. Well, someday I will use it.
I want to see you.
It won't be for this. Good evening, everyone. Hello and welcome to the planning board of June 27, 2023. We call the meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. If we would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, we have had some issues with scheduling with town council. So with the permission of the board, the chair will accept a motion to move item number three to item number one on the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. We've been able to schedule time with the town council due to scheduling conflicts. We are making plans to meet with town council in early July. And we are going to continue the Route 44 preliminary subdivision review until such a time as we can consult with town council as was decided at last meeting. So thank you all. You have a question, please. You'll have to come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Hi, Melissa Jackson. Just curious, are we going to get notified of this meeting? Because a lot of the abutters back here actually didn't get notification of this meeting, and I feel like the abutters should absolutely be receiving notifications of these meetings going forward.
I certainly feel for you, but the planning board does not have a requirement to notify the abutters, which I'm guessing. In the regards of a preliminary subdivision plan, should a definitive subdivision plan come in front of us, then you will be notified.
Okay.
But we're planning our meeting with town council. So if you want, it will be on the next agenda of the planning board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And I'll be back.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Bean Town Home Services, Inc. requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3150, 343, 41, and 2230(c) of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number 5, Ricketts Palm Business Park, off Spring Street in Carver. In the Spring Street Innovation District, zoning district, the lot will be comprised of an approximately 6,621-square-foot light industrial-style building with associated driveways and parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Any person's interest and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the planning department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. The applicant has requested a continuance until July 11 of 2023. Meeting Room 1, 7:00 p.m. So the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing of Bean Town Home Services until July 11, 2023 at 7:00 p.m., Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Mr. Dion and seconded by Mr. Robinson. Do we have a discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Helen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Yes, please, you have a question?
Yes, I do, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Michelle Rothfuss.
Could you pull that a little closer? I only heard Michelle, so.
I'm sorry. I'm Michelle Rothfuss. I just have a quick question for you. Is the Route 44 project going to be spoken about at all tonight?
Yes, there is a definitive subdivision rescission plan on the table tonight. And that is, we haven't opened the public hearing.
Okay.
So if you'll give me one minute, that's our next. So we can talk about it after we open. I don't even believe it's.
Because we were all going to leave, and I'm like, hold it. We don't know what's going on yet. So we just wanted to know.
No, no, you will learn something.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
So this is, our next order of business is a public hearing notice on the application of George A. McLaughlin III requesting a definitive subdivision rescission approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located on Montello Street, Green Parkway, on Assessor's Map 20, lots 20-2, 20-21, 20-14, and map 22, lots 22-3, 22-31, 22-3A, 22-3B, 22-3C, 22-4, 22-5A, 22-10, 22-10-1, 22-11, in Carver, Mass., in a highway commercial HC and Green Business Park zoning district. Any person's interest and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. All right. Thank you very much. I'm not certain. But are the abutters required to be notified for this? It's a public hearing. I'm not entirely certain on that. So I don't see a list of abutters in the application.
Mr. Chairman, Bob Rogers, GAF engineering.
Hi, Bob.
We did obtain a 300-foot abutters list. We did submit it with the application. Filed May 23.
Can we see that list, please?
Oh, wait. It is a public hearing, but you have to go through me, please.
So standard practice is for the planning board, the department, to notify abutters for a definitive.
Yes, yes.
We did obtain and provide a list.
All right. I will ask for, I will ask Mr. Rogers. So he's not here tonight, obviously. Other than that, we've looked at the subdivision, preliminary subdivision rescission control plan. If you could just, I see there's some people here interested in it. If you could just give us a narrative of it.
Would anyone, before we start, would anyone want a half-size set of plans? It's a three-sheet plan set. I brought seven.
Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate that.
You can share them. You can hand one to the public.
Sure. Well, I just need one for me.
Thank you, Bob. I see the plan purpose, but if you could just give us an narrative of it.
Good evening, board members. I'm Susan Murphy from Dane Torpe. I represent Route 44 Development. Here with us, we've already talked to Bob Rogers, and Bob Delholm from Route 44 Development is also here. That rescission plan is a belt-and-suspenders application. This, it is going to rescind a, what is now just a paper street from a prior subdivision approval for Mead Road, also known as Park Avenue, that was granted many years ago. And by the terms of the original 1995 subdivision approval, if it wasn't built by October 31, 1999, then it was deemed to have been rescinded. So technically, by its own terms, it's no longer in effect. But at, I believe, Mr. Bott's request, in order to kind of just clear, clear the path for going forward, Route 44 Development submitted the rescission plan. And so all it's doing is taking a plan, a road that's on a map that has never been fully built out in accordance with the original subdivision approval and rescinding it. So it's simply, that's, that's all that's happening.
I'm just going to read directly off here for the public.
Sure.
The purpose of this plan is to rescind all previous subdivisions that were a part of the locust property and to create one new perimeter of the locust property shown as Lot A herein. And basically, you're, you're making it one big continuous lot as is called for in the urban renewal plan.
Correct.
Yes. All right. Anything further?
Bob, anything?
Just the three sheets that you have. The first sheet is a cover sheet. It's got quite a few plan references, deed references. The second sheet is a straight existing conditions. It refers to when the survey was done. And, you know, right below the paragraph that you read or the sentence that you read, Mr. Chairman, is the specific existing subdivision plans to be rescinded. The third sheet is the definitive subdivision rescission plan, which depicts in addition to the existing conditions that, you know, dashed the prior road layout. It's, you know, again, it's automatically rescinded after two years. But this basically, you know, provides a means to record the decision of the board. And so that there's, you know, what's not built isn't just hanging in the registry. And so you would ask, you know, and I was here in January, but with the preliminary submission, we had to do a preliminary and a definitive because it's an industrial subdivision. And so, you know, we would ask whether it's tonight or at a later date for the board's approval to rescind and endorse.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If you're all set.
Yep.
Yes, this is a public hearing. So does anybody from the, okay, I see two hands coming up. So thank you. If you could come up and identify yourself, all comments should be addressed to me. Or questions.
Jean Winslow, 28 Heather's Path, Plimpton.
Hi, Ms. Winslow.
Hi. I'd like to see the list of abutters, and I'd like to know what constitutes the 300 feet. I directly abut Route 44's property. I'm at the end of Heather's Path.
And you say you haven't received this.
No, I have not.
So the planning board absolutely is going to check on that. There's no question about that. So this, because of that, and you're here telling us you never received it, we're going to check with Mr. Bott, and we're going to make, check the certifications on that. So this meeting is going to be continued to our, our next meeting.
Okay. And then my next concern that I have is regarding the quality of the water. Because it's my understanding, and this goes way back. I've lived there for 30 years.
I understand, but it has to be topical. So, and, and the topic is the rescission of all previous subdivisions to create a unified lot at this point. It's, it's not about development.
Okay.
And we, we can't deal with, with the other issues at this time.
Okay. So at what point, just because I'm not sure what, before anything progresses with it, wouldn't that be something that's actually looked at first before anything else is discussed?
Absolutely. Yes, it absolutely is. It's, it's, it's well outlined in the urban renewal plan. But any development will have to go through proper scrutiny.
Okay.
And yes, water, protected areas, wetland areas, any sort of issues we might run in with contamination on the property. This is all just.
Oh, yeah.
So those are the issues we deal with under the site plan review.
Okay.
Or a preliminary proposal, or, I'm sorry, a site plan or subdivision plan.
Okay.
But a rescission plan is, is to just get rid of.
The original plan.
All the garbage that was lying around.
So it's rescinding the original plan.
Well, not literally garbage, but yes.
To put a new plan, right?
Well, this is just, and it's part of the urban renewal plan is to make one consolidated property. And to do that, because it's, it's supposed to be a unified development. And that's to get rid of all the previous subdivisions. And this is more of a housekeeping. I don't know when the latest date on this, but, but I think it was like '94, '95. Well, maybe you can correct me. Is the latest date on the previous subdivision plan is, what, 1995?
'95 or '96.
Yeah. So, I mean, technically, it doesn't exist, but they want to clear all the detritus out of the registry of deeds in order so there's no, you know.
So is the, is the plan to put in an actual housing subdivision? Is that what they're moving towards?
That's not.
Potentially?
I, it has not been in front of the board, has not been addressed to the board, has never been proposed to the board. So we, we cannot answer that until it comes in front of the board.
Okay. All right. I will be looking forward to my mail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Jackson, Fort Heather's Path in Plimpton. I just have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if you guys are the ones that would be the ones to answer them. So I'm going to ask, and if it's not, then I'll just go to whatever meeting I can ask these at. First of all, the town meeting where, you know, they were going to pass that 65-foot height variance. And then the plan got rescinded by the older company that decided not to build.
Well, that, all right. So again, we can't talk about that.
Okay.
You're going to have to call the planning department with, with questions in regards to that.
Okay.
The previous plan wasn't rescinded. The urban renewal plan is, is valid for 20 years.
Okay. But if they didn't have a plan at the town meeting, wouldn't that revert back to the regular height of the buildings?
No, because the urban renewal plan was proposed prior to that, and it was approved prior to that. And so there's a statutory limitation on the length of time. But again, you're going to have to call the planning department.
Oh, I will.
I can't really address those issues tonight.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine. Another comment or question that I just want to make was, you know, what is going on basically with this urban renewal? I was under the impression, or under the impression of the law being that the redevelopment authority and the Carver Planning Board had to coexist on any changes to the urban renewal plan. Has that happened?
We haven't had a joint meeting with the RDA. But this is actually in line with the urban renewal plan in order to consolidate the property and clean up the issues regarding prior subdivisions. This is one of the early stages of the urban renewal plan.
Okay. Also, another thing is, you know, aren't, if there's going to be a different change of plans, don't you have to resubmit those plans to the state, especially when it comes to the wetlands?
I, I can't answer that because.
No, I understand.
We'll be meeting with, discussing.
All that.
Certain issues with town council.
Okay. And then the last thing was, I did, and I don't know, again, this might not be you, but I'm just airing a concern that we will be bringing up when we can. You know, I've been hearing that as part of the mitigation features of the PFAs in that area that we should be getting our wells tested. And if we do have PFAs in our well, that we have some sort of mitigation that Carver is supposed to be paying for so that we have the, you know, the filtration system to remove the PFAs.
Again, doesn't have anything to do with the plan. But in regards to that, I would say both the Conservation Commission, you should, you should talk to the conservation agent.
Okay.
And call and talk to the planning department in regards to those questions.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
No, thank you. Please.
Hello. Mark Rothfuss, 20 Montello Street. I just want to point out there still is a Montello Street. We don't have a sign anymore because it was taken down. But there are still people up there and human beings. This piggybacks onto what Melissa was saying. We all watched town meeting. We watched the warrant vote and what the people wanted with regards to the 65-foot height versus 40. It does, it's part of this agenda because a preliminary subdivision plan was filed sort of last minute, and you can watch the videos.
We're not going to discuss the preliminary subdivision plan or any aspects of that tonight.
Okay. So how about the two-acre and six-acre lot plan? Is that still part of this? There's a rescission here. What about the two- and six-acre spinoff?
Those are, those are not included, and they weren't prior approved subdivision plan. So, and it, at this point, it isn't any, there's no approval. I'm guessing you're referring to the.
So I guess my question is, because the board had issues with that particular document.
Questions, yes.
Questions. It wasn't correct. There was missing things. So I submit to the board publicly that it's invalid. It didn't make the town meeting deadline.
This is a separate.
There is no 40, 60-foot question anymore.
I, I understand, but this is not in regards to that.
It's out here publicly, and I voiced it before. That document, that submission should be invalid. There should be no more question about 40 or 60 foot.
We, we won't talk about it because we're waiting on consultation with town council.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
No, thank you. Any further questions? Comments?
Just one more thing. I'm sorry.
Sure. Don't be sorry. It's a public hearing.
I'm a Canadian. It happens. So Michelle Rothfuss, again. Our concern is, right now, that property is becoming a dumping ground for all kinds of things.
Again, we have to keep it on topic.
But that is, it's the property.
Rescission.
It's a repop, it's that property. And when somebody was buying it or somebody had a plan for it, it was, you know, everything was taken care of. Now that it's kind of in the winds here, it's like not being taken care of. And it's kind of, you know, wrong that the town of Carver paid all that money to make the beautiful road, and people are just like crapping on it. And it's just wrong. And we want to know, is it going to be cleaned up as part of their plan for this property?
All I can say in regards to that is this is one of the very early steps in regards to the urban renewal plan.
Okay. Even though other boards say, like, we're on step three of this plan? I mean, we've been watching the meetings, and like, we've seen what people said, or have, you know, what they say, what they've said. And one board to the next is not the same. It's like everybody is on a different agenda instead of being on the same agenda, which I'm not really understanding. I think if, this is such a big deal for the town of Carver and even for us abutters, wouldn't you all be on the same page? Wouldn't you all be on the same step? Instead of somebody saying, well, this is just a preliminary. And then somebody's like, oh, let's rush this in so we can get the plan in. And no, now we're on stage three.
Well, this is actually part of the consolidation process of, of the lots and, and getting that.
Which is what stage?
It's, it's, let me see. It comes after acquisition and consolidation. And then there's, there's a list in the URP which I can't off the top of my head remember. So I, I wouldn't want to just spew out a list in potentially the wrong order.
Right, right. Because we're just, you know, we're concerned about the area and what's coming into the area now. Like, the people coming in, dumping, and, you know, coming off that road, and there's nobody there cleaning it up. It's just a mess. And that's not fair to us who live on that road, you know? It's just, it doesn't seem right. And I'm hoping that somebody takes the time to go back there and look. Because I've seen trucks there, you know, people out walking the property, you know, from some different companies. But I don't see anybody going there and paying attention to what is actually happening there on that property now.
No, I know. Please, oh, well, I would think that the building inspector would be appropriate, especially if people are dumping on the property.
Oh, it's, it's like such a mess. You wouldn't believe. You can go, you go on that brand-new road, and you take the first left. You go back there, and it's like a carpenter's dumping ground right now.
So has anybody, and I'm just telling you.
And we don't know who it is.
The appropriate way to address this particular issue, and it's not with the subdivision rescission, but it is to contact the building inspector. And Kevin recommends the DPW and.
From Carver?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and request them to look into it.
Okay, all right. Because it is becoming, you know, it's not great.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Would it be wise to get a plane and call the police on them?
A what? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And.
And you might even.
Illegal dumping.
Illegal dumping. I mean.
Again.
We try.
I can, I can try and help you with that, but it doesn't have anything with the rescission plan. And, and we're not a enforcement authority.
Right. I understand. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
I see another gentleman with his hand raised.
Hi, my name's Steve Cohen. I live at 20 Heather's Path. I just have a, I just want to follow up on Park Drive because that's, the whole, the whole meeting started talking about, you know, the rescission, and that Park Drive was not included as the road anymore.
I, I don't.
Well, I mean, that's what you said earlier.
I, I don't, I don't believe that's, that's what I, I never. Oh.
Yeah, you did.
Let me, well, I, I didn't say it, but Bott did.
The engineer did.
Okay, so.
I don't mean you Pacific.
No, no.
And that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
My question is this. So Park Drive is a mess, okay? So I'm really confused why you're telling us, who live in Plimpton, we need to call the Carver DPW and ask them to go do something. Why should the Carver DPW have to clean up the mess that's the property of Route 44 Development?
We are not.
How about they clean it up? I mean, why should the, why, I don't even live in town. Why should the Carver taxpayers have to pay for it?
I, I understand you're upset, but we are not an enforcement agency here.
No, I understand that. But you're also the representatives of the town. And it would seem to me that you guys would contact the DPW and have a conversation with them about it, or.
We would have to see it, and.
Then when you're done here tomorrow, take a ride up there and go look at it. I mean, I don't think it's, it's unreasonable to what, what we're asking. I mean, if you live there, you'd want the street to be clean, too.
I, I certainly agree with you, yes.
You know? And there's no reason why they couldn't put up a gate on that street. There's a lot of different things they could do, but nobody seems to really care. You know, so I, like I said, again, I don't think we're being unreasonable. You know, I think everybody, you know, likes to live in a clean place. I know that we all live on Heather's Path, and we all take care of our properties, and, you know. And that's all we're asking for is the Ara Butter to take care of his property. Well, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Susan Murphy, again, for Route 44 Development. So I was speaking with Mr. Delholm while we're listening to the neighbors. So, I was speaking with Mr. Delholm while we're listening to the neighbors, and he's going to make sure someone goes out there and sees what's happening. It's not, obviously, the owner and I doing this, right? And I leaving it in that condition. So, they will send somebody out there and, and see what the condition is.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you listening to the concerns as, as intently as, as we do here. All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, the Chair will accept the motion to continue the definitive subdivision rescission plan for Route 44 Development LLC until July 11, 2023, Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall at 7:00 PM.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Dion. Further discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Helen Sardillo says aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the interest of the public, and, and your words have weight to the Planning Board. Just insert some, I wish, well, no, thank, thank goodness that we aren't the be-all and all, because that would be problematic.
Well, it's difficult because it borders on two towns.
So, yes, but we have certainly taken your questions, comments, and we've paid very close attention to them.
That opinion itself is something that's helped out tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
I don't think you voted on that.
Um, to continue it?
Yeah, I was me, I, that you voted on it.
Oh.
I don't think you voted on that, continue.
Oh, okay, um, yes, Colonel Shea votes I to continue to...
I didn't hear you, sorry, I wasn't...
No, no, I, it's happened once before, it certainly could happen again, so, uh, it's been continued to July 11, 2023, Room 1, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 PM. And, and thank you. Planning Board member notes? Seeing none, uh, the Chair will accept the motion to approve the minutes of May 23, 2023.
Thank you.
No, thank you all. Again, it's very important for the public to interact. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 23, 2023?
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Any questions, comments, or edits in regards to it? Seeing none?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Helen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. At this point, the Chair will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo and seconded by Mr. Dion. I'll, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much, and you have a good evening.